Okay, it's 5:00 on Monday, March the 21st. Want to welcome everyone to our city council meeting today. We'll call this meeting to order. And if everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here. We have a quorum. Agenda item number four, I'd entertain a motion then to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion or a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you. Well, at this time, I want to thank Levi Clegg, he's our videographer this evening, and also want to congratulate certainly the Bishop Garrigan Girls Basketball Team on their state championship. So with that said, I do have a proclamation that we would like to read and present to you. So if the team and the coaches could gather down front, and then if the council also could gather on either side of them facing the camera, then I'll read the proclamation. Okay, this is from the, this is the City of Algonah proclamation honoring the Bishop Garrigan State Champion Basketball Team. Whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team leadership of the 2022 Bishop Garrigan Girls Basketball Team has enabled these student athletes to earn the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union Class 1A State Championship at the Wells Fargo Arena in Des Moines. And whereas winning the 2022 Class 1A State Championship game on March 5th, 2022, brought honor and brought honor to Bishop Garrigan High School, the City of Algonah, Cassuth County, on the local and state level. And whereas additional honors were bestowed upon Bishop Garrigan players during the state basketball tournament, including Junior Molly Joyce as the 1A All-Tournament Team Captain, Junior Audie Crooks as a member of the All-Tournament Team, and Senior Meredith Tigas as the Class 1A Iowa Bankers Association Student-Athlete Achievement Award recipient. And whereas head coach Brandon Schwab and assistant coaches Nick Elbert and Joe Bartolo, team members, parents, faculty, and student body at Bishop Garrigan High School were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Rick Murphy, Mayor of Algonah, and the Algonah City Council do hereby recognize and publicly commend the Bishop Garrigan High School Girls Basketball Team for their tremendous achievement in winning the Class 1A State Basketball Championship, the first team state basketball title in the school's history dated this 21st day of March 2022. Congratulations. Present that to you. And you want some before a?
You know what, let's smoosh everybody in a little closer. Can't you do it? There we go. Yep, yep, good job. There we go. I'm not just getting in front of the camera. I'll get inside it. All right, give everybody a one, two, three. Congratulations, ladies.
Well, I just wanted to come up here first and just, you know, say thanks to y'all, you guys, for that proclamation. And it was a really fun ride to be a part of the team and be able to coach this special group of players, you know. It was, we don't make anything easy on any of our hearts or emotions as the game goes on. We held that true as the game went on. But got enough to bring a state championship back to the city of Algonah. You know, we had so many fans, so many community members, not just from Bishop Garrigan, that were down there supporting us down at Wells Fargo Arena. So I mean, I just want to thank from our team and our school to the entire city of Algonah, the way they supported us down there. You know, when the game got done, a lot of the union state officials and stuff said, what a great crowd we had and having more people than most any team there. That is a tribute to not just Bishop Garrigan, but the city of Algonah for that. So I'd like to thank the entire city for that. So thank you, guys, for this. It was a fun ride and we'll remember this year forever. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number six, an update from the city administrator.
Just a few reminders for projects that we have coming up. The bid notice for the North McCoy Phillips Street and McCall Mar Street parking lot was public, notice of bidders was published earlier this month. And bids on that will be opened on March 29th at 11:00 a.m. here at City Hall. Other projects we have coming up that we expect to approve at our next council meeting on April 4th to go to bid will be the South Park Pickleball Courts. And we're looking at, here's a preliminary site plan that we have there, but we'll be building two new pickleball courts at the site for handball courts this summer. And then finally, next meeting as well, we're having approving plans for the Build and Overlay project, which is a discussion that's an agenda item later. So I'll save comments. So then, then also just want to remind the contractors out there that we are having our, kind of reestablishing our annual contractors meeting with the city to go over building notes for net requirements, things like that. And so that will be this Friday, March 25th at 7:00 a.m. here at City Hall.
Thank you. Move to agenda item number seven, and this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here in the council chambers that would like to speak? Seeing none, barb, is there anyone on the phone?
Doesn't look like anybody's trying to speak.
Okay, thank you. We'll move then to agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda. And that includes approving the minutes from our March 7th work session and council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, approve the department reports as well as the minutes from the various boards and commissions that met, and approve Jacob's administrator's report. Move to approve.
One second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number nine is a public hearing. It's 5:10, and we'll go ahead and open that public hearing on the proposed city budget for fiscal year 2223.
Up on the screen here is the public hearing notice. This was published in the newspaper. But what this hearing is regarding the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022-2023, which runs from July 1, 2022 through June 30 of 2023. We haven't seen any comments here at City Hall since the notice was published.
Okay, hearing none, Ben. It's 5:11, and we will close that public hearing. And we will move then to new business, agenda item number 10. This is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Algonah Municipal Code.
This ordinance makes a few amendments to appointments of officials. I'm just clarifying in some language. It puts in appointment of officials in chapter 200 of the city council, lists all the positions that are already under the council's authority, is scattered throughout the code, and then removes the positions of superintendent of public improvements as well as the super superintendent. As well as on the chapter two, mayoral appointments, it removes the Board of Electrical Examiners and Playground and Recreation Commission, which no longer, neither of those no longer exist locally, then adds the Housing Commission. And then in section 13, above the code, under the super superintendent appointments, it removes the language that the position shall be appointed by the city council. Therefore, moving forward, that position would be appointed by the city administrator as the same as other city positions.
I'll move to waive the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Rodney to waive the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried.
Move to approve the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Rodney to approve the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley. Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number 11 is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Algonah Municipal Code concerning parking.
What this ordinance does is removes the parallel parking on the east side of Nebraska Street between Moore Street and Nebraska Street, or excuse me, between Moore Street and Nebraska Street.
Motion to waive the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler to waive the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley. Yes. Okay, motion carried. The second reading is approved then for the parking. Agenda item number 12, this is a resolution concerning the fiscal year 2223 budget.
Yes, the resolution addresses kind of three items. First, it approves the proposed budget for fiscal year 2223, which we previously had on the public hearing. It then adopts the proposed budget and then approves transfers as they are budgeted, which are stated in the resolution. And then finally certifies the taxes levying rates for the year. This year's budgets, the tax levying rates for regular property will be going up slightly to 16.07005 for $1,000 valuation. And we'll note with that to discuss there on one of our planning or budget workshops. The effective impact of that change for residential properties will be an effective 3.5% decrease in property taxes and on modern residential, 5% in the way of the rollbacks that the state worked this year. And then on commercial property, it will be an increase of 0.6% on the property tax rate. Have to answer any questions.
Motion to adopt the budget for 2223?
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number 13 is a resolution pertaining to the ARPA funds.
This resolution is the second resolution coming from council regarding allocation of the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds, which the city was allocated from the federal government. City was expected to receive a total of $804,280 over two years. City council previously allocated $163,000 of these funds. This resolution formally allocates ARPA funds and $200,000 towards stormwater infrastructure elements of the North McCoy and Call Street parking lot projects, and then $50,000 towards Algonah EMS to support payroll and operating reimbursement as well as premium pay rates. Combined with the previous allocation, the city will have approximately, has, will have approximately $390,000 in ARPA funds yet programmed. The two items approved in this resolution match what was adopted in the budget in the previous item.
Jake, you mentioned a total of 804,000. That comes in over two years. Is that on some kind of a schedule or are we spending it as fast as we get it?
We've received the first half, about 400,000 in August of '21. Then we'll receive the second half in August of '22.
Okay.
So a couple months.
Okay.
And then funds are partly programmed by the end of 2024 and actually spent by the end of 2026.
Now, so we do have time on it. Okay, move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Jody. Any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number 14 is a resolution pertaining to Little Sprouts Daycare.
Little Sprouts Daycare has paid off the balance of the revolving loan fund that they had to the city. And so in light of that, this resolution acknowledges that repayment and then authorizes the release of the real estate mortgage that had secured the loan.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Tyler, a second from Don. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you. Thanks for paying off that loan and we'll wish you continued success. Agenda item number 15, this is a resolution pertaining to NIACOG.
This is, we've got this and the next item regarding the grant administrative services for the community development block grant for CDDG. Grant, city was awarded, support the rehabilitation of qualifying owner occupied houses. This resolution approves the contract for grant writing and general administrative services with North Bay Area Council of Governments, which the city had previously procured for. The cost for grant writing is $7,000, which is up. And then the other administrative services will be covered by the awarded grant.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler. Yes. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Then agenda item number 16 also pertains to NIACOG as Jacob spoke of.
Yes, this is a different contract for services that was procured. This is for technical services, whereas the pre-summons for kind of general administrative services of the grant, the technical services, is for the work specific to the house. So it's for serves, services including inspections, developing scopes of work and cost estimates, bidding the projects, managing them, and handling the change orders, lead pain testing, and administration of abatement if necessary, and then administration of other CDDG contract compliance. The cost for these services is covered under the CDDG grant award.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
A motion from Don, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number 17 is a resolution referring to a settlement agreement.
This is a settlement agreement with Hy-Vee Inc. for a failed backer check violation which occurred in November of 2021. This is their first of that's.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion from Harley, a second from Jody. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number 18 is a resolution approving two new city permits.
So the resolution establishes permits and associates these for two items specifically for fence permits and then temporary use permits. The rationale behind these, kind of just go through each of them separately. On the fence side of things, it's something that we already spend a lot of time providing technical assistance or answering questions on where fences can go, how high they can be depending if it's in the backyard, side yard, if it's a corner lot, they have for line of sight reasons, it'd be shorter. And so in looking at when other cities of a comparable size, like Algonah, it's pretty standard to actually have a permit as a way to just make sure that people are getting the right information upfront and avoid some situations that come up with someone constructs a fence in a way that isn't allowed. They've already made that investment and that's not fun for anyone. So this is just a way to get that information out front and make sure we're kind of avoiding some potential problems down the road and the information's getting out to the owners and contractors. Proposed fee on the fence permit is $25. With that, we're also, you know, there's an attachment that they actually draw a sketch of where the fence would be, just to make sure that we can then visualize whether that would comply or not be in compliance. The second item is also a proposed $25 fee for a temporary use permit. Back in 2018, the city got a temporary storage pod, a chapter of our city code, which allowed for up to 60 days placement of one of those pods for whether they're moving and packing that up, or sometimes contractors will use them to store equipment or work in. And we're proposing that to have a permit for that, as well as for if someone wants to put one of those in their front yard or in the right way, as well as if they've had a large dumpster, very like eight cubic yards, a $25 temporary use permit. This will allow us to track when that was actually placed and that 60-day calendar kind of starts, and that it's placed in a way that's not creating a line of sight issue, as well as if there is an issue in the placement, you know who to contact, as well as a formal process if someone needs to use, you know, maybe in the street or the right of way, setting up a dumpster there, that they can get that permission and we can make sure that it's going to be in a location that will not, not negative impact drag into the neighborhood. So those are the two proposed permits recommended by staff.
So our, I know that this is, this meeting is widely viewed, but for the few people who miss it, is this going to be publicized some way that people know that if they're going to build a fence, you need to come in, talk first, and get a permit for that, and also for the temporary ones?
Yeah, it will be, and that would be part of, as you can see with the style of these permits, if we're going through and updating all our permits, just to make them a lot more user friendly, and then being able on our new website to download them, do a fillable PDF online, and then bring them in. So as we have, we kick up off in the construction season here, we will be sure to push this as well as just other permit requirements out on, you know, Facebook, the radio, in all the means to remind people of these items.
And I would think also the companies that provide the large dumpsters, so that they know when they rent them out, to make sure to let people know that they, what they need to do.
Yes, we can definitely, that's a very good advice.
Could you, could you clarify, like, for dumpster, eight cubic yards, could you give us an example of like how big that one would be?
It'd be the roll-off size, not.
Devir, you got something?
Not the kind that has the wheels.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you guys have been by North Side over here, that one that's been sitting on Paul Street, there was one on the North Side, it'd be that size or bigger. So it's not going to affect the dumpsters that are commonly placed in everyday trash and mobile, for weekly services.
Okay.
And just to clarify too, on that temporary use ordinance, that doesn't apply to business operations as part of that, so, you know, having a dumpster that size isn't problematic, you know, it's mainly that if you're getting a special one for a certain amount of time in a residential area.
And then on the fences, what similar permits are we giving out for something like that right now? Or what are we issuing for anything similar to a fence being constructed? Or, you know, what's, what's similar to this one right now that we would enforce?
Are you referring to just the fence?
Just the fencing here, yeah.
Currently, we have no fencing permit period.
Okay.
So a lot of times we get calls of, people ask if we have a permit or just wanting to know what the regulations are in terms of height and locations. And then there's always the occasional ones where we see something that went up that, come up that way.
Yeah, I think we'll probably still see, people still, just throw them up anyway. I'm just wondering if it's necessary to be charging $25 permit fee, making them get a permit when they may already construct it anyway, and then ask forgiveness? So like, are we going to make, are we going to be forcing people that are going to do it their way anyway, to be breaking our ordinance, or?
Well, they'd already be, I mean, regardless if there's a permit or not, the ordinance, you know, already is what it is. If they build something out of compliance with that, they're already in violation, you know, erected a structure that's not legal. This is just a means to allow us to catch that beforehand and educate, as well as just one of those things you look at, kind of balancing on how, what we charge fees for service, fees for permits is, you know, the $25, I mean, it's not going to cover the amount, you know, in terms of what it costs for staff, time, and resources to just what we do on it just currently when it's just a phone call. But, you know, it's a way of kind of balancing that of, well, who should be paying for these things, is the people actually using it, or, you know, 100%, you know, just the property taxpayer. So it's a way to kind of balance the user fees versus general taxpayer fees.
Can I have a question? Might want to do that, I don't know.
Sure.
Say somebody does build a fence without a permit and it's not legal. What are the repercussions then?
If someone builds a fence that is not compliant with the city code, and we're made aware of it or we find out, then we simply notice that they need to have a current fence in compliance, which would mean that they're moving it or moving it. Last one we had, we want more, more adjustments for regarding some of these.
Okay, so we need, motion to approve the resolution establishing the fees.
I'll second. That was a motion, Rodney?
Yeah.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion then?
So the, yeah, for the large dumpsters and the temporary storage units, I guess, I don't feel like large dumpsters, you should have to get a permit for, in my opinion. I don't feel like you should have to go and get a permit to get a roll-off dumpster. So that's just, I just. So that's just, I just want people to hear my opinion. It's classified together, so I'm probably going to vote no, just.
So if somebody put a roof on and they needed it for three to five days, that would be a twenty-five dollar fee, just so I pencil it in my head that way. So I know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because most of the time you get a large dumpster for something like that or a construction permit or a construction of something.
You know, and this is obviously something we have a had a work session on this, you know, top. So if it's something that we want to, you know, give us direction or to look at, create new things or just, you know, clarify some of these questions and, you know, table it and certainly consider it the next year.
I think the fence permit is a good addition. I don't know if it should be bolted together with the temporary use permit right now.
I think so too. I think we need to discuss it more, maybe table it, go back to it.
So I could amend my emotion to just say that I wanted the, to approve the fence fencing permit and then we could table the, the.
Temporary use permit.
Temporary use permit, thank you. I had to get my glasses on.
Yeah, we can remove section two of that resolution. So you can move forward with the fence and hold off on the temporary.
Yeah, that's so if I wanted to amend the motion to move forward with the fence.
Okay, I will second that amended emotion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second then for the fence permit. Any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. So then the temporary use permit, we need a motion to table that?
Well, no, no, I think what you did is you.
We're just good there.
Resolution for you.
Okay.
So that, you know, you approved the amended resolution and then you're just giving staff guidance on how you want to move forward with that temporary use permit. So that doesn't need any kind of motion.
Okay, then we're good.
We'll put that at the top of the list next time we have a work session to review those items and see if there's any change to make that move forward.
Good, good discussion. Agenda item number nineteen, this is a referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
This is a request by Commerce and Mutual Insurance Company to rezone property they own along Highway eighteen. Proposed to be rezoned from agriculture to highway service business district. This is a referral to the commission.
Move to refer.
I'll second.
Sorry.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Jody to refer this to planning zoning. Is there any discussion? Hearing that vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number twenty is also a referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
This is a request to prefer the plan zoning. This consists of three items. It's for lots there along Spur Street, but to subdivide that Easterly Lot, that ends in O one nine. And then over that newly subdivided lot outlined there in red, impose a planned residential unit development, overlay zoning district to facilitate a planned unit development for residential. And so this was, this was an ordinance that we adopted one, two years ago and this will be our first time actually going through on the potential projects with it. But at this stage, we refer to planning zoning. Planning zoning would look at the subdivision, the concept development plan and then how that would be laid out. Put any recommendations or with that and then come back to council for consideration of that. So it would be a zoning amendment of that overlay. The underlying zoning classification will remain as is. It's a current arm for. Mike, you know, if you have.
What's kind of being considered by A A E E C and Three D Homes and the Diamonds is to develop the alcohol cluster housing. Multi-unit, not condominium development, but shared party walls with individual lots being basically rejected out from the walls. First development is a three-plex. It's going to be, at least as planned now, one of the units on the east side is going to be a ranch style and then the two units on the west side are going to be two stories. And what's going to happen is A A E E C is buying all of this real estate. David Yorkham is going to buy, or Three D Homes will buy that first lot. He's going to develop it and then as he sells those off, he'll be paying down and they'll be moving further, further west to do similar development.
So is just, is this just on the highlighted area?
Yes.
Okay, so the remaining one, one point three nine acres is?
The remaining one point three nine acres is going to be developed and he'll come back in every time he gets a new plan because he's not really sure what's going to work. What sells, what's, what are the people looking for? And he's hoping to do that first one build. And once he does that, everybody can say, oh, I like the two-story, I like the one-story. I'd like to have you build the next one like this.
Okay.
The planning development, planning partners, that you have a comprehensive plan for the entire development and they can vary in size greatly. So more or less what he proposes is a point series of smaller overlays. So they can kind of adjust if needed now as the fence is developed.
But this is going to be continued then on to that one point three nine acres?
That's the plan.
Okay, that answers the question. Good. Oh, this is great. I'll go and need to.
Move to refer this to P and Z.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Brad to refer this to planning and zoning. Any other discussion? Hearing that roll call, Deb?
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Jen, item number twenty-one, this is a pay application for the library renovation project.
This is pay application number twelve and the amount is one thousand four hundred eight dollars and sixty-six cents. We waited for work of installation of a heater in the sprinkling room. Several of the pay app, just to count and update up on the library project in general. I know F V H is working on updated designs for the exterior. And the goal is to hopefully have those finalized here in the next month, I imagine, and then complete those exterior improvements yet this calendar year. It's a small payout, but more visceral going out.
Move to approve the payout.
We have a motion from Don, second from Tyler to approve this pay app. Any discussion? Hearing that vote please, Deb?
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-two, this is an appointment to the tree board. There was a vacancy that began actually in two thousand twenty-two and this is a council appointment to serve a three-year term.
I've spoken to Brian Ernst, who is, who has said that he would like to serve this position. So I would make a motion to approve Brian Ernst on the tree board.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second then. Any other discussion? Hearing that vote please, Deb?
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don. Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Great, motion carried. Thank you, Brian. You'll be a great asset to this tree board. So agenda item number twenty-three is an appointment then to the Board of Adjustment as Jim Buscher's term expired and this is also a council appointment for a five-year term. But you have a name for Board of Adjustment yet? Okay?
No.
We'll keep that one in mind. And if there's any citizens out there who, who are interested in opportunity to work with the city, please give us a call and we can answer any questions that you might have. Agenda item number twenty-four, which is our final item, this is concerning the two thousand twenty-two million overlay work.
This is more or less just a discussion item of the one to share with recommended changes to the scope of work and then provide an opportunity for council to provide feedback. So we had originally put together a scope of work for twenty twenty-two million overlay that had a total estimated construction cost of one point eight million. We covered approximately the equivalent of thirty-five blocks. In December twenty-one, we'd signed a design contract with gold would make to do that work. Since we got a design underway, obviously the war crane and geopolitical consequences of that oil has gone very high and it's very volatile in pricing. The new million overlay asphalt uses a lot of oil. And so it's just kind of a way to hedge our bets a little bit. And that we dedicate something that was dramatically over budget. We're proposing to remove a few different sections of street from this project. We look at bundling our projects and doing them in, you know, large quantities like this is to get, you know, advantageous prudent, advantageous prudent pricing. The fear is that even with this large product, the syrup oil, as unpredictable as it is, that, you know, may not get those economies of scale with contractors, perhaps, you know, building them kind of risk with that bid price on it. So we propose to remove these sections of Ridgely, Blackford, Lucas and Durant from this year's project. The design on them is done and they need to be done sooner than later. We'd love to do them in twenty-three, twenty-four. So it would be nice to have those, at least those elements ready to go. And then we're proposing to include Worcester as a bid alternate. So the other streets would be the base bid and then that would be an alternate depending on where prices come in that we could either choose whether or not to execute. But if, you know, we bid this out and prices do come in very good, we can always look at what we did last year when we got really good pricing. We ended up adding, you know, two blocks of Kennedy Street that we hadn't done any design on. You know, if they do come in good, we can, you know, work with the contractor and see about change ordering in those other segments that that we're going to, you know, that I recommend we reduce. But we'd rather find ourselves in that position as opposed to putting all of this in here and then it's a number that is just, you know, exceptionally high that you wouldn't want to commit to without having, without putting a lot of challenge in on where we'll line up for financing for the twenty twenty-three projects with remaining funds on our twenty twenty-one bond. So total including Worcester, this would reduce the scope or the estimated cost by about eighteen percent over three hundred thousand dollars to one point five million. So still a large project. I'm just trying to take a little bit off the top.
So I guess, sorry, when you sent this, kind of opened the door to me thinking, okay, let's look at the whole project again. What's going on with this project? What stands out to me the most is Lantry. And I know in the Streets Subcommittee, we talked about this a little bit. I brought up, you know, Lantry, it, it's kind of a commercial street. Why, why are we looking at doing Lantry? There's a few businesses on that street. It's not a widely used street. You know, I guess I'd like to hear more from administration of why we'd like to do that street versus not doing these other residential streets. Which are, you know, they're residential, more people are on them. Yeah, they'll be hard to do because they're residential. They'll impact people's lives, but in the long run, they're helping more people. And it's kind of a, it's kind of a one for one. If you look at the price of doing Lantry versus these that you just mentioned, I think it's kind of a.
We had, we had discussed Lantry as an option because it's been exceptionally wide street too compared to the residential streets. I know when talking with Kurt Gielis and their Street Superintendent, you know, they spend a lot of time doing pothole repairs on that. And that it is a heavier used street. A lot of people use it as a bypass off Diagnol or off McGregor to get around Phillips and the street lights there. When you looked at these other segments and kind of just in terms of packaging the project, what makes sense to pull out, you know, the Blackford and Ridgely. They're teeing off or rubbering during work, but those entire segments need to be done. And so it probably makes sense that in a future project, you just take care of all those three, four blocks at once. So when crews come in, they can set some paper and mobilize and then just go. Lucas is kind of off on its own as well as Durant. And Worcester, that's where we look at kind of taking off those smaller pieces. And like I said, the consideration on Lantry was that it does receive a good amount of use and just the amount of pothole that has to be argued in that.
Um, no, but like you said, Kurt and I had discussed Lantry is a heavily used street. It doesn't seem like it, but it does take a lot of traffic. Also, Ridgely from McGregor, Nebraska, that little section was a hundred percent curb replacements where we're trying to cut some costs. That one was probably the first one we cut because it's a lot more expensive. That one goes, that block or two in there because it's a hundred percent curb replacement. So we moved that up till probably next year when we can go through with Ridgely and do a few blocks all straight in a row.
I mean, I'm just looking at too, I know maybe this is more Subcommittee talk here, but, you know, whole, big picture too. We do Lantry over there. We do that whole road. Here's the library just on the other side of that. Parking lot is still a mess. It's going to be a mess. We're going to redo that entry and people are going to wonder, why'd you do this road over here in the parking lot over here at the library where all these families and older people are trying to get in the parking lot? And it's, it's a hazard, you know, the sidewalk's a hazard. So I'm looking at the perspective of people, you know, trying to get in there too. And library is something we got to look at in the future too, I know. But I'm just trying to keep that all in perspective when we're looking at this whole picture.
Just quick to point out on the library, I share your view of that parking lot and the desperate need to address it. We had hoped to have that in this year's project and we originally had it with design and this group with the concept plan only because of the exterior, the exterior work that needs to be done. We want to make sure that's all done, you know, exactly what grades we have to hit in terms of resurfacing in the parking lot when we're doing that south drive. So assuming that the exterior of the library doesn't need to be done this calendar year, that will be a twenty twenty-three project. And then I'll just also note that, you know, authority over the library property and how they spend their capital funds is, you know, the responsibility of the library board.
So to find a little bit here of Worcester Street to be included as a bid alternate, that, that's sort of in the plans for next year, isn't it?
That's not the reconstruction portion.
Yep.
The two blocks that need to be reconstructed are in the plans for twenty twenty-three.
Right, right.
These are the two blocks north of that.
Oh, I see, okay.
That we can just melanoverly.
Oh, okay.
That's just one lane.
Or south.
Yeah, yeah. So the thinking on that was for those block, the two blocks south of McGregor, a booster would be reconstructed in twenty twenty-three.
Three, right, okay.
And so when we look at it, it's nice to be able to do entire sections or have a full length of the street section. But well, if Worcester was still twenty-three, that would be okay because that two blocks south would won't be done till then. But, you know, we would like to see it done earlier than later. So that would be decided to keep it or recommend keeping it as a bid alternate. And we can just exercise, you know, depending where they come out. We had discussed to be able to do all these as alternates. The engineer's recommendation was that just probably makes it a little too convoluted and would be a little discouraging in terms of attractiveness to the project.
So we just need to be optimistic here.
Well, we do have a chance because a lot of asphalt companies buy their oil here in advance.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, it was a little more expensive last year than it was the year before, but hopefully they're not going to be figuring this year's prices on that.
Yeah, good. So is there any other directions? Whether this was sort of informative for us? Is there anything that you're looking for? Well, yea or nay, or?
You know, from a timeline, we're looking at on April fourth, having council approved plans, specifications for a bid. So we would like to, and if we want to, you know, have a Streets and Sewer Committee to finalize these things before we bring it to the council, and before that would be an option. But we would like to take direction on if this, this recommendation is acceptable, or if we'd like to see change to that. So we can hopefully have everything squirrely and done, and it comes to the fore, and we approve those. We still could technically on the fore make some tweaks and just approve them with those, and then, you know, they could make those changes before they post the plans. But we really don't want to move that back any further, just with where we're at in terms of construction season.
Well, I can see we want to get out by the earliest possible, so we get in front of the bidders. So I don't know if we feel we need a Streets and Sewer meeting or not, but.
I guess the street proposed to be reviewed, or any that raises particular concerns about a waiting year or two?
No, not what, you know, Barb said about Ridgely now. You explained that, that's the curb and gutter one.
And when we talk, you know, we're talking on Ridgely and Blackford, we can do a three or four blocks straight through instead of just one block stuck off there because they can just pick up the paper and move it on to the other side of the new asphalt and keep going that way.
So it sounds like there's still a lot of things that are up in the air, I mean, undecided yet, so.
Well, I did to a decision point on, I mean, we could also take the pay, let's not take any of them out. And the variety of this is if, you know, we're budgeting, you know, one point eight, if we come in at two million, we can make that work, you know. We can amend the budget and pull some, you know, and, but if, you know, private comes in at two point five million, you know, that really puts us in a bind in terms of what we have planned for next year. And the pay now, the next year's money, where it comes from for a construction project. So it's more of just making sure we don't box ourselves into a situation where having to reject all the bids or accept one that is extremely high, and then hopefully, you know, being able to negotiate it down from there. But the contractor probably would be very interested in that. Whereas if I was, if you want to add to this scope, usually they're much more interested in what we have.
Yeah, I think after discussion, it looks like a good, reasonable plan, and knowing that we're planning and continuing with it next year, nothing is really very far off as far as being fixed.
So when you put this out for bid, they don't put down, well, my, let's say the project's two million. They don't say Lantry's, you know, two hundred thousand, this street's that. So you can't just pull a street out from that. Do they put, they don't bid it in that way?
Well, so each street will have, you know, a certain number of units defined.
Yeah.
And then the contractor provides that prudent price. So, you know, we can look at, you know, Worcester Street, for example, and know exactly what favors this, know many square yards, you know, milling, new asphalt. There's this many where your feet are concrete, there's this many, and there's this much of sidewalk work. And so the breakdown, you know, you can actually see it by street when it's bid that way, but it's, you're accepting the, accepting the bid as it is or rejecting the entire bid.
Okay.
And so that's why if we do it as an alternate, we have that option.
Because they're bidding it.
Yeah.
The whole project, they can lower their expense the bigger the project. So if we, that way, we can't just pick and choose and then use their numbers from a huge project and then say, no, we only want this. And then, yeah.
Well, I just didn't know if we could pull a street instead of add the street. We're kind of, we could add one, or it sounds like, you know, obviously we can add. They don't like you to pull, but if you knew the linear cost, but of each street.
And the bid doc doesn't say this street requires this much work. There's, in general, how many tons of asphalt we're going to need. How, how many linear feet of curb and gutter is going to need replaced? And they've bid a price on that. So if we add a street, then we would figure out the curb and gutter, like Jacob said, and asphalt. But it's not, Lantry's going to take this much, and, you know, State's going to take this much and such.
And so the, you know, bid documents have the, you know, projected units and the prudent price. And then when the project's done, go in, or the engineers go in and, you know, measure the actual units. And so if, you know, it took less, you know, the city's not paying as much. But if it, you know, turns out it took a lot more, you know, then it's adjusted that way.
Because if prices are outrageous, we're not, we don't have to accept the bid package. So we have to rebid a small portion of roads for next year if we assume prices will come back down at some point in the future. I mean, not, I know our roads need a lot of work, but, I mean, I just don't want to say that if they come in at two and a half million that, well, that's what they came in at, and we have to move forward. We can say that's unreasonable.
That's kind of the, or the position you go into with, you know, hopefully with a project like this, the city can either accept the lowest responsive, you know, responsible bidder, or we can reject all bids. And so, you know, if all of them are extremely high, you know, then that's the council's, you know, decision whether or not to reject them all, and then let's reduce the scope, rebid. You know, can likely, you know, turn around reasonably quick since all the construction documents are done. But in reality, you know, if we brought it on the fore, it was probably having to do, I think, late April or early May. You know, so if we decide to reject them all, then we have to refine it. You know, we're probably not looking at getting out to bid until late May, early June on a rebid, which at that point, we have to have a pretty significant reduced scope in order to fit the entire project in the, in the building season. But I, I think if, I'm comfortable that, you know, if we reduce based on, you know, these numbers basically taking down our current one point eight estimate, one point five, that kind of looking at that, you know, kind of two million dollar mark as once you go over that, it's definitely tough. I think we still have enough leniency in there that if prices are higher, that we're still going to be under that. And then have the option to potentially add, add some if it's significantly lower.
Yeah, because we can always add these in, like you say, but.
Yeah, because I know it's going to be done, so we can add them this year, or we'll be ready to go next year or year after, when you feel like.
That sounds like the best way to go, that way, I would think.
I assume there will be some thought to, I guess I'm looking at the courthouse, the block south of the courthouse will be worked on, and the block west of the courthouse will be worked on. I was trying to think any city activities that might be going on that, that could interfere with. The only thing I can think of would be the tornado alley run. If that, you know, probably be a minor, that could be adjusted. But I assume you're also trying to think of any conflicts that we'd want to, you know, make sure the timing is right on.
Yeah, and like with the courthouse, I know we'll have terms in there that, you know, their parking lot, they're on Hall three, it's pretty wide, that half of that's going to have to remain open at all times. And the reality is on the, you know, most of the curb in that area on the east side, the west side is in very bad shape, the vision curb at all. But in some of those, like along that, you know, State Street between Hall and Thorington is generally in good shape. So the concrete work there should be minimal, and they're coming in the milling. You can still drive on that if they don't cover the asphalt, maybe so in there a little bit later. But it's usually just the same day or the day after that, any on the other. You know, it can be a pure time of two to four hours. But we are, are going to have language in there, in our contract language just to make sure that the entry to the courthouse, they always have access to that. And then, you know, the others that their, you know, the concrete work can go to the first. If done, the street still remain open. And then we did try to stick away from eventuring too much further into the downtown, even though there's obviously crews there that need it. With the hall parking lot, that's going to be redone this year as well. So we're not, you know, for those displaced vehicles that there's several that are around and going to other areas.
So we have some little decorative brick crossing there on State Street, right? On Thorington Estate, don't we? So they'll have to be careful on milling to avoid that.
Yeah. So we know that the circle is right here, you can see that by from the concrete to the asphalt.
Okay. So when State was done, that's all on concrete through that intersection. So the milling won't start until it hits the asphalt.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. I think it sounds like a workable plan.
So we'll proceed as presented?
I would say so.
Maybe we can be optimistic and add some back in.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, we're, it's just heading our back, yeah. Hopefully, you know, if last year we got really great pricing, if we get that again, yeah, we'll look at it. Obviously, it's just trying not to avoid a worst-case scenario.
Yeah, yeah, good. And thank you for looking at that too, so. Okay, that brings us to the end, to the end of our published agenda. It is six oh three, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.